All meeting to order, please rise for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Opened meeting, comments, republic at this time. There be no one wishing to address the board at this time, you'll have a chance at the end of the evening. Minutes of the previous meeting. You all have copies, is there any additions or additions?
Make a motion we accept the minutes I've read?
Motion made in second, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those vote by your side of eye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Bills?
There are no additions or deletions.
Thank you, Arson.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor vote by your side of eye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents?
The first piece of correspondence you have is from Time Warner Cable, it is addressed to the mayor. It's from Henry Pearl, vice president and general manager. Thank you for your recent letter in support of quality local programming on Time Warner Cable Systems serving your community. I appreciated the opportunity to speak with you on this subject. We certainly share your interest in local programming. We value our relationship with Mr. Castine and continue to explore ways in which that partnership remains beneficial for the entire community. We are always looking for feedback on ways in which we may improve our programming and cable services. Again, thank you for sharing your thoughts. Please feel free to give me a call if you have any questions. Sincerely, Henry Pearl. That's regarding the letter that Mr. Castine asked us to send. The second piece of correspondence you have is from Montgomery Holzke and Ladder Company, addressed to the mayor and the trustees. We wish to inform you of a new member who has been approved to our company for probationary period of six months. Tammy Sample, 32 Moore Street, Champlain. Please act on this member as soon as possible.
Make a motion that we accept the new member?
I'll second that. Motion made in seconded, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor vote by your side of eye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
We have another piece of correspondence which is not on the agenda because it was handed over to me today. It's to the mayor of the Village of Ross's Point and members of the village board regarding the development of Rock Avenue Extension. Dear Mayor and members of the board, I am writing this letter to confirm my intention to develop an extension of Rock Avenue which was previously designated to be Ryan Avenue in the Village of Ross's Point. It is my intention to begin development of seven residential lots and construction of residential dwellings later this calendar year. It is my understanding that you need this information so that you can budget anticipated costs of the village and provide the municipality's obligation with regard to utilities. I would respectfully request that you place this project in your budget for the year 2000 so that we can begin the development of this subdivision. Respectfully submitted, Vincent J. Delio.
Yeah, we need to either say we accept or reject, but I think we should have any discussion with it, so.
I'd like to know where the property is, is it on the west side as you go down, Rock Avenue? Like Mrs. Payne used to-
It's right behind Stewart Street.
Okay.
It runs from Rock Avenue, it would connect with Phillips.
Okay. Is there enough land there to actually supply a road or whatever? If there's enough land-
Well, whatever they do, they have to comply with the village code, you have to have it 50 foot right away. I mean, that's up to the developer, right, that? He has to follow the guidelines.
Who owns the land, Bob, you know?
Delio.
Oh, it is, oh. Whose was it before, because I just was thinking about it today.
Been his for a long time.
Oh, it has, okay. It's like where Mrs. Payne used to live at the end, it would be to the west.
Do you know where Mitch Willett lived?
Yeah.
Go right behind him, all the way up to Hakegaz Nation.
Okay. I wondered if it was going to look at Hakegaz.
But on the south side of that.
Okay, yeah. Good, eight, seven more houses.
I'll make a motion that we accept it as long as all the village codes are followed and there is enough room to the road. I don't believe it's any problem for our suburb.
Yeah, I'll second that, I think it's a good idea. Motion made in seconded, any more discussion?
Yeah, walk me through the timeline, what, Delio, your motion says that as long as all the village codes are satisfied and respected and so on, but what, Bob, what happens first?
First of all, what they're gonna have to do is they're gonna have to submit a plan to show you exactly what the number of lots are, the width of the road, that information, so you can put that, you'll be able to put that onto your tax map. And then once you get that and you know exactly that he has met all of the requirements for the proper size of lots in the roadside, then you can go ahead and you go with your utilities.
Okay. So our acceptance of this tonight is just to allow him to do that preliminary work? Is that right?
I think he has to understand you, that you gotta know that he must meet all the village codes.
Right.
And if he does not do that, then he will not be able to develop it.
I'd recommend it's based on-
Has he built any houses in the village at all? I mean, I don't even know the name.
I think it's George Graham, isn't it, who owns the village?
Well, what he said is he just asked, yeah, I don't think that, no, Delio, I think-
Yeah, I don't even know the name. Isn't-
He's strictly-
Vincent Delio.
Oh, okay.
Yes, Doug?
And also, not only does he need to meet village code, he'll have to meet the Department of Health code also, since it's a seven lot subdivision, it qualifies as a major subdivision, so he'll have to go to them for approval as well.
I didn't think he had to do that long, he had a municipal system.
No, if it's over five or more lots, I mean, for example, Beacon Heights-
I need something.
That's always going through the health department, so you look at it and the county health department looks at it also. But you're right, the municipal system makes it real smooth.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote by your side of eye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. That's it?
That's all.
Thank you, Deb. Reports of mayors and trustees, that's all I have tonight, is a resolution for the election whereas the next round election, where officers of the Village of Ross's Point shall be held on March 19, 2002, and whereas the board of trustees is required by Section 15-104, subpar paragraph B of the election law to adopt a resolution determining polling places and hours shall be open, the hours that polling places shall be open, and address of those nominated. And I'm not gonna read the rest of it, other than George A. Lewis, 50th and Broad Street, nominated for mayor, Justin D. Herzog, 11A Delaware Street, nomination for mayor, Dale Menard, 18 Priscilla Lane, nominated for trustee, John Hotbro, 15 Store Street, nominated for trustee. The polls will be designated, Huffstead Hall, which is right here, 39 Lake Street, Ross's Point, New York, will be open from 12 noon till 9:00 PM. And I put that before the motion, in the second.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, roll call vote. Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Penfield?
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. And that's it for me, from the trustee, Menard.
My first item on the agenda is to authorize the clerk to publish a legal notice to go out for paving bids for the year 2002.
That's a motion, in the second.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor vote by your side of eye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
My second item is to make a motion to authorize the clerk to publish a legal notice to go out for bids for materials for the underground electric project.
I'll second that. Motion made in seconded, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in-
Well, okay. What materials are we talking about, Bob? What are we bidding for? Everything?
Yeah, it'll be your wire the rest of the year.
And it's everything for this year, is that it?
Well, I don't, I don't know on that one, but I thought-
Well, before, we only got permission to go for the piping-
Right.
-last time, yes, and you need more than the piping, so that's why-
Yeah, exactly, well, I thought that, I don't know, I guess I'm confused, I thought Arson was gonna run the numbers first through the budget before we went for the rest of the deals, because you gotta borrow the money. I don't know, is that-
You can need the amount. You need the amount to do the-
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, we got it in the mail, but I thought you had to work it through the budget deal before you bought the rest of the deal. I don't know, if you can, it's fine with me, because most of that stuff's down the road, but you know.
If you got the amount of money you need, and you know what you need to, you know, the amount of piping and stuff, I guess we go to bed and then you borrow the amount of money that we need to pay for that.
This isn't dated.
Okay.
I mean, it has to be done within a reasonable amount of time, but it doesn't say you have to do this within thirty days.
Okay.
You know, so you better off to get board approval now.
Yeah, all right, fine, yeah.
But there are all the material, other materials for this calendar year, or this coming year?
For the electric underground that Bob gave you the figures for-
Okay.
At the last meeting, and all he did at the last meeting was do the piping.
Right.
So it's for the same project.
Maple Street, what else are we doing now?
Maple Street, Clinton Street, Liberty Street, Fine Street, and finish the south end underground. And also take in the materials for the new street that Delio wants to put in, because we'll have to move that pole line if they're gonna-
That'll have to go underground eventually.
That'll have to go underground.
And of course, we really wanted to do that. We really wanted to do that when we were doing this project, when we had no idea what they were gonna do.
Exactly. So now they got an intent, we can probably figure out where stuff's gonna go.
If it's allowed to go forward.
Yep.
Anything else, Kelly?
No.
All those in favor of the motion, vote by your side of eye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
My next item is a discussion for the MEUA Accounting and Finance Workshop, which will be held March 12 and March 13 in Liverpool. And the, Arson has gone over this and believes that there's nothing beneficial to this at this point in time, we'll wait for a further workshop. My next item is I'd like to make a motion to request an executive session for the proposed acquisition of real property.
I'll second that. Motion made in seconded, roll call vote. Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Penfield?
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson?
Aye.
The mayor votes aye.
And my next item is from the water plant, to authorize attendance for requesting permission for Dave Suprenon and Brian Gellino to attend a one-day training seminar in Glens Falls on March 26. The seminar will provide them with six contact hours for their water operators' grade lists and training. That's from Gary Wilinski, and all the paperwork is filled out, so I'm making a motion that we authorize the Brian Gellino and Dave Suprenon to attend this.
I'll second that. Motion made in seconded, any discussion? Discussion, sorry. There being no discussion, all those in favor vote by your side of eye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
And my next item is, what we left off, last meeting, to authorize the mayor's signature on the telecommunications site listing agreement, and I believe everybody has a copy of that. And anybody has questions for?
Yes, I'd like to introduce Kurt Kolikowski, he's from Acco Property Advisors, he's a gentleman we've been working with on this agreement. Since two weeks ago, what we've done is, any reference in that document to sale of real property has been completely eliminated, it's all lease only, and if there are any further questions about the document and how this process works, please ask Mr. Kolikowski.
Did we run this by our attorney?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
I believe there was a question last night, that says that we're, the owner still is gonna pay fifteen percent. Now, would, is that what?
Some of the questions we had last time, one of the questions was, there's concern about these companies, and reportedly, some of them go bankrupt, and what happens is, if they go bankrupt while they're in receivership, they keep using the equipment, the antenna, and we, the village, can't do anything about it, we can't, you know, purportedly, we can't climb up there and take their stuff down, and then they're protected by the government, so they don't pay their rent, and then we still owe the broker their commission. So we'd like Mr. Kolikowski to address that item.
That, these agreements really are just a, it's similar to a listing agreement, it's a glorified real estate listing. What it says is that we receive a portion of whatever the town receives, when the town receives it. So the first, one of the issues that we talked about was, you know, what happens if there's no payments received, is the village to apply? The way that's written, and again, we have our own attorney who's preparing that for us, that's written so that whenever the village receives payment, then we would receive the agreed upon portion of that. If, for instance, the village negotiates, if we're able to negotiate an annual payment from the carrier, and you get one month's sum, January 1 for the next year, we would take our commission out of that. If you receive a monthly payment from the carrier, we would take our, you know, portion of that smaller amount from that. There was a question, you know, that Doug talked to me about, as to whether or not, you know, we could be paid upfront, and of course, we could do that, but if there was ever an issue with the village being paid, then we would have been paid for something that the village didn't receive. So generally, that's how our agreements work, so that there is no question of whether or not you'll pay, you know, we get paid nothing unless, one, we find a carrier for the site that wants to lease it, two, the village agrees with the carrier to all the terms of the lease and all those stipulations, and that's no minor task, and then, once the payments come in, then we will get paid at that time. And that's how that agreement is written. As far as the issues of bankruptcy and things like that, I believe there are five carriers' licenses that have an FCC license to provide service to this area. I, you know, without being an expert on that particular issue, I've never heard of a carrier that's gone bankrupt, that type of carrier. I am familiar with a company called Metrocom, which was operating in the northeast of the United States, but they were really going into urban areas with a different type of technology, where they would hang smaller types of equipment on every other telephone. There had been a lot of buyouts, and that's what some people hear, okay, there's no more, you know, there's no more Mob Bell, there's no more Cell One, there's no more Omnipoint, and those are three companies that have all merged with larger companies. Omnipoint has become Boystream, Mob Bell has become Horizon, and Cell One has become Singular. So the trend in this industry right now is for, right, all these regional companies are tying up, there's, you know, right now, there's international companies, and it's just a merger announced, I guess it would be late last year, with a German company, Deutsche Telekom, that's gonna buy Boystream, which is the third largest provider of this type of service in the US right now. So that's what's happening. Generally, the way the leases with the carriers work is they have the right to, you know, be acquired and sell your site, quote unquote, to whoever acquires them. The acquiring company has the right to come in and say, okay, now we're operating this site. However, that transition is done subject to current tendencies, so there wouldn't be any change in the terms of the lease or anything like that. You may be notified in writing that, you know, we have now, you know, merged with Omnipoint Communications, and your check will now, you know, come from that particular company, but that would probably be able to change. One of the things that we would negotiate with a carrier, especially for a situation where you have got a piece of equipment that's providing utility service to, you know, people in the community, is usually what we do to address that issue is require the carrier to provide a performance bond, and we can include language in the lease, that whatever the term of the lease happens to be, if it's a five-year term, or three-year term, or seven-year term, there can be language included in the lease that says, prior to renewal, the carrier will have to provide proof of this performance bond, any amount that the village engineer feels is appropriate to remove the equipment if, for some reason, the lease expires and the carrier doesn't come in and remove the equipment. They are obligated, I've never seen a lease where the carrier hasn't been obligated to remove the equipment after, after, of course, it's an issue, whether or not they're able to.
You gotta understand about the issues that we're talking about, and we're a municipal record.
Right.
We own our own record company, and we have a couple people that, well, they're fiber optic companies that went bankrupt. And we're still supplying municipal power to them people, and we can't collect the money.
Right.
And I think that's wrong, because I, Anne, her, are paying for that, that's not, that's not right to the public. And as far as I was concerned, if I had my way, I'd just go up and pull the switch.
Right.
But then the United States government steps in, and if the guy, the United States government wants to step in, as far as I'm concerned, then they should pay us.
Right. And I'm not, I mean, I'm not an expert on bankruptcy law or anything like that, on, you know-
Well, I don't know, I understand that.
Right, I don't know the issues of-
Well, see, we're looking to protect our-
Right, if somebody files bankruptcy, you know, what's the period? The only, the only experience I've had with it, you know, brokering deals and representing carriers, has been in any, any situation where, you know, a carrier's been unable economically to continue a site, either one, they've continued to make the payments because it's in the lease and just not remove their option, or they've offered a buyout to the landlord, you know, say, okay, we've got four years left on our lease at, you know, X amount of dollars a year, what, you know, how would you like to take a month's sum payment right now at such and such, and remove the site, to move it. The performance bond, I think, would give you that, you know, some additional safety, you know, an additional safety net to get the equipment off of there, you know, in a way that's not going to harm the tank, if you're doing it.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to worry about that.
Right.
What I'm worried about is that I don't want these villages to get stuck again.
Right, I got a couple-
Now, is there, like you said on the other ones, is there, is there a lease on these, or?
No, no, the cable people.
The ones that went bankrupt, yeah, the fiber optic?
Oh, no, they own, they put, they put the buildings up, they put it on their own property and everything. It's a little, two brown buildings up by the senior housing.
I mean, this is-
I guess, I guess this is, I mean, I understand where you're coming from, but this is a lease, so the worst we're gonna get stuck for is seven years. I mean, if we get a company, start at day one, the most we're gonna get stuck for is seven, or say, we don't wanna go that long, say, we only wanna go a three-year lease. So if that company goes bankrupt the day after we sign this lease, you're gonna get stuck for three years, and that's it, correct me if I'm wrong?
Yeah.
I mean, this isn't like the other, where we keep continuing to provide them power, we don't have to provide them any power past this lease, right?
That's correct, and this document we're talking about tonight is for a listing agreement, that is to authorize this man and his company to go out there and market our property so that we can get some customers to the table, where all of these questions are extremely pertinent and will be done in detail in the contract language with the provider. This is just, we're hiring a broker here to go and, go and get them, and if you don't like what's in that contract, we don't sign it. We've got control.
Right, the carriers understand that, you know, the lease is always gonna be subject to municipal approval, and there's no obligation on your behalf to sign anything, you know, if you can take a look at it and say, these are the changes we don't want, maybe this is the, this is the, we don't get this change, we don't have it. That's part of what we do, representing you, is negotiate some of those terms, you know, and counsel you, and what is the industry norm, and, you know, what, what do you think you can, you know, get, and what's-
Could you tell us a couple of companies, are you talking like Nextel or somebody?
Yeah, I mean, the companies off the top of my head that are licensed in this area would be Horizon, Nextel, Singular, Sprint, and Boystream.
I mean, they're all big companies, they're not-
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Is this very common to do this now? Like, we're in a different position up here, because like, our cell phones a lot of times go off the Canadian towers.
Right.
It causes a problem. You look at your phone bill, and if it's on Rome, you're going off the Canadian tower.
Right.
You can go five, 10 miles down the road, you might hit a Canadian tower, you might hit an American tower, because there isn't a lot of them around here.
Right, you're near the edge of what the coverage areas are. Do you mean common, as in going on municipal-
No, are people doing this with water towers around the country now?
Yes, I mean, I myself have been involved with, you know, a dozen or so installations like this. The closest, you know, similar installation I can think in this area would probably be Peru.
We went down, yeah. We went down, looked at that.
Yeah.
Personally, I think it's a good idea.
Right.
Is there any downside, though? That's the only thing that, I mean, there's gotta be something that's-
Right, I mean, you, you know, financially, you know, the carriers are going to foot the expense of taking care of this, everything. If, if the village, you know, even felt, generally, if you felt that you had to hire a professional over and above the normal diligence that you would do on something like this, you know, you can request them upfront that, you know, we're gonna sign this lease, but we need to review it, and, you know, we're gonna charge whatever, I mean, it's, of course, it's up to the carrier to agree to that, but generally, financially, you know, all the, you know, all the expenses are paid for, I mean, there's, most of the carriers' standard language contains a provision of, you know, increase in assessment on a property, now, I don't know how that would work in municipal, but, you know, they would, they would take care of that, and they're, that's what their business is. You know, the only other down, you know, problem I can think of, and Doug and I have talked about this, is, you know, any problems with the tank. And again, you know, the installation and the drawings, they would, you would expect them to prepare a full set of stamped construction drawings, not just zoning drawings, you know, with details of attachments and things like that, that, you know, there have been issues in the past, you know, where we've represented the carriers, where there's been issues related to the warranty on the tanks. So we'll go in and have the company that manufactured the tank review the drawings, and issue a letter and say that, you know, this isn't going to void the warranty. So those types of things, theoretically, could be an issue, but that's what, and part of what we need to do, is need to address all those issues at fault, to make sure that they're adding to the-
I just wanted to ask you, what the name of your company is?
It's ACO Property Advisors.
And where are you out of?
Saratoga Springs.
Okay, and what is usually, is that 15%?
Yes, we have, the percentage is 15% over the first term of the lease, and 10% over any renewal terms. And the terms can vary, well, I generally would say, you know, it is possible to get a shorter term, but the carriers do wanna have, they want to know that they'll have the ability, if they want to renew, you know, under the, under the terms of the lease, the chance to do so for 15, 20, 25 years, because it's an investment in, you know, on their part, and they want to complete that, a shorter term as possible.
If we sign this, then you gotta realize that we're in the process of putting up a new water tank, and that probably won't be completed until 2003.
Right. I, my understanding, I've discussed it with Doug, the tank that's there is still gonna stay for the future.
That, that's not a doubt. If that, if we inspect that tank, and it's not feasible, it's coming down.
Well, I would say that, you know, to market the site, you know, what the, what the carriers are interested in is the location and how high of a structure they can get, and those are the major questions. If, you know, someone were to come along tomorrow, say, you know, we get on the site, then perhaps it would be an issue, but I would expect, you know, under the normal timeframe-
I just wanted to get real that upfront, but that gives you work-
And the other thing is, you know, you have to have a carrier that wants to look in this area. So, you know, we do, our, our job is to, you know, keep the pulse of the industry and find out who's on a certain stage of the building. This obviously is not a primary route, it's not the initial route, Sprint and Nextel just finished builds along the Northway from Champlain down to Peru, probably six, eight sites each, and that's what they do initially. Next, they'll go to the second phase, where you might get, like, when it's 211, you know, coming across that way, you know, get some population coming this year, that's where you'd expect that to happen. So, you know, we've got to, you know, find someone who's looking in this area, and then, you know, get this site to them to give them all the information, and, you know, that, to say that that would happen tomorrow, you know, because, you know-
Oh, we need six months or a year.
Right.
So any other discussion on that?
Yeah, I have three questions, George. Um, go back to when you were talking about the payment, the, the way that you would receive your payment. Have you ever done an agreement where you're paid the commission directly from the carrier? So our payment, payment is basically split, some goes to you, some goes to us?
We've never done that. Have I heard of it? Yes. Um, I would say that, um, you know, if we are representing the village's best interest, that, that may be an issue with some carriers for, um, bookkeeping liability purposes and tax purposes. I know that they, that's usually a very last resort. Um, and the only, you know, only concern I would raise, if I were to, as well as on the village, is there may be, um, less negotiating power if that particular thing isn't, isn't happening. But I have heard of it, we met Doug, I have heard of it.
Can I follow up to that question? Would you tell us exact, or approximately, how much money we're talking about?
I would say, you know, for a tower like that, you, you, you're, this is very general, depending on the carrier, but you're probably looking at anywhere from, you know, $5,000 a year up to, you know, $15,000 a year.
Okay. Substantial.
Right.
And that's for one, that's per carrier?
Yeah, yeah, good. Oh, that's good.
And then when, when, when in it we do sit down to write an agreement with a carrier, who is involved in that process?
Well, we would, we would negotiate under behalf of the carrier with, generally, we would say we want the village attorney or somebody to be involved early in the process. And once some of the legal issues are put to rest immediately, then it usually goes to the board or whoever to talk about some of the business, you know, when you consider business terms of the lease.
So with all of the things that have come up both in this meeting and I'm, I'm sure Doug filled in about our, our last meeting, we would be able to provide you a list of all of our concerns early on in the process?
Absolutely. Right. Generally, what happens is there's a carrier interested, they would provide us with a written copy of the proposed lease. And then we would take that to the village or the, either the board or the attorney or however that process would be over. Usually with those leases, there are some technical items upfront, especially with municipalities that mainly relates to liability issues and indemnification by both parties or environmental problems on the site and things like that. And, uh, most of the municipalities have some pretty, uh, standard stuff that they need, uh, would be done. And usually after that first revision, they might go in, but it could be done, you know, however, however you deal with the best. And then our job is to say, you know, these are, you know, these are some things we think you could get, these are some industry norms, you know, that you, that we could possibly ask for. And, uh, and to say, these are some things that probably would make the carrier go away.
And with regard to the date on this agreement, June 30th, 2003, with when our tank is going to be complete, is, is that something that's still appropriate?
Yeah, I mean, we, generally, the, the minimum timeframe we ask for is 18 months because there is ramp up time, um, to get the stuff going and get it out there. So if, if knowing that the tank is not coming up until that date, then, you know, maybe that should be, maybe six months or so to give us some extra time as to show it up.
And is this any kind of agreement that we could cancel with a mutual agreement between parties? I know you have the six month clause.
Yeah. The six month clause, right, which would be just in the case of, you know, a period that we, you know, found that we, we had expired. Um, I, I don't, I can find out the answer for that, but I don't know.
Okay. Have you got anybody in mind?
Um, you know, right now, I think the two most likely candidates for, for the phase that they're in that have money are, uh, would probably be a Sprint affiliate in the area and, um, the Verizon affiliate.
Because we had a thing at work today where Nextel wants us to work for the government.
Right.
And they want to come in and supply cell phones for us.
Right.
And they're going to hook, hook them into towers so that we don't have to go up the Canadian tower.
Right.
I'm hoping that.
Right. Well, I did hear today, I think Nextel lost 25% of that stock today. It dropped 25%.
Any other questions?
No, we still have the word buyer though in the end of the third paragraph, which I think we should change. I know it's picky, but I think we should change it.
Buyer would be the.
Yeah. At that point, I mean.
Sorry.
Judy, either way, I'll excuse you.
Talking about you.
What should that word be then?
Lesser.
Lesser, yeah.
Lessie.
Anything else?
I don't know, is this something, I mean, I think this is very good, but just in light of the size of the commission, is it something that we might consider trying to do on our own?
We ain't going to be able to do it on our own.
I think we're too busy.
I don't know, we haven't thought about it, have we?
Yeah, I, I.
It's reasonable, I think.
Well, I think it's reasonable too. I mean, I'm not saying that they're, they're asking for too much, but it, is it something that we might want to think about doing on our own?
I don't think we have the time or the expertise to do that.
I don't either.
I don't think we have the connections to do that.
15% of $5,600.
Well, I mean, if I could.
Sure, no, please.
Um, the first point I would make is that generally, the, the way, um, the way the carrier's operating, and my company is in this business, we've got started this business working for the carrier, so I, we, you know, I personally know Zach, I've been at the meetings where we sit down and look at sites. Um, there are two issues. One, generally, there's a third party involved like myself that, that acquires these sites for the carriers. Um, so, um, you know, the carriers themselves are generally not the people that go out and prepare the sites to be presented. It's generally a third party, um, company that's in the site acquisition business that will go in and present to the regional acquisition person at this company and say, these are, these are our three choices. This is what we have. Um, so there is some, as you said, there is something to say about knowing the people that are in this and knowing who to call for what areas and when we find out, when people here call some of the industry and find out who's going where, when. Um, the second issue is that the most critical aspect of the telecommunications industry is time right now. Um, they will avoid a site that they think is going to take extra time, as is evidenced by the fact that there is very few carriers in the AP right now. Um, in fact, uh.
We're not in AP though.
Right. They will skip right over it and go somewhere else because it's a time issue. Um, so oftentimes, the decisions on these sites are made within, I wouldn't be exaggerating to say a four to six hour timeframe, where there might be a meeting at nine o'clock in the morning and, um, someone will ask for information to present it to them by one, one or two o'clock that day, and then the decision will be made to go to that location. So, um, and there's, you know, besides just price and location, there are other things involved in the site. Um, you know, the snow mobility, um, you know, uh, competency of the landlord to understand what they're entering into, how long is it going to take to negotiate all the terms of it and that kind of thing. So part, this, part of the service that we provide is we will synopsize that location for somebody. And, you know, when we hear that somebody needs something, they're going to get the information that they need immediately to say, you know, this site can work. And again, also, one, one initial point, which is true, um, if there is a site that is being managed by a company, that generally is a sign, that's a landlord that has been briefed on the issues that are likely to arise and that there's been some type of preparation they'll come in with hands to say that one, we're, you know, we're ready, willing, willing and able to, to proceed on the site, so I didn't.
You know, the only thing I foresee is, yeah, bottom line is, this is just going to continue to escalate. Cell phones, I, I predict, and you can laugh at me, another 10 years, you'll see most houses not even have a hardware phone.
Right.
Because the cost, the cost of operating a cellphone is cheaper than, than your phone bill.
And there, there is a company right now called Cricket that is, uh, in metropolitan areas that is trying, is going to provide that kind of service, has some business plan.
And provide phones for your home.
And the market, drive you to the market, things like that. And it'll be local service only in your neighborhood. And everybody uses a type of technology which will be hung from, you know, every third telephone pole or whatever. And the technology, you know, again, what's happened from the, from the analog technology to the digital, and the digital is, you know, where you get your email and things like that. And, and the, the change there has been that the range of the equipment is shorter. So now even companies like the cell one and Verizon are probably the two most established ones here. Even they are having to do infill sites now because they can't, as they switch their sites over to digital, Verizon's been slower than you, but as they do, they, they need to provide additional space. So in the future, you know, there may be technology that records even more, you know.
Continue, so wait for the future.
Anything else?
There's not a lot of labor or something.
Well, just if we sign this agreement, are we going to leave? The date is June 30th, 2003 or?
Uh, I, I, I mean, based on what we discussed tonight, I'd rather set it for December 1st, 2003.
I don't have heartburn with that. I don't either. I think I've given enough, right time and.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Thank you. Thank you. We get a motion to that effect.
I make the motion that we authorize the mayor to sign the telecommunications, telecommunications site listing agreement.
To midnight, December 31st, 2003.
Right. And the change of the word buyer to lessing.
I have a second to that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, is there anything more discussion? There being any, no more discussion, all those in favor, both will use a sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. And my last item is. I won't do this till I get back.
Last item is just, uh, for Doug, ongoing water project?
Yeah, just a quick update, uh, the, uh, tank, the bids on the water storage tank are due a week from this Friday, or Thursday, excuse me, Thursday, February 28th at 3:00 at the Village Hall, that will be, Village offices, that will be opening the bids. And we're expecting three bids. Um, all three will bid on the, the steel option for the steel fluted column tank, and we expect that two out of three will also be bidding on a concrete.
Composite.
Excuse me, composite. Three will be bidding concrete base, steel tank, two will be bidding all steel. That's what we expect. And you'll, and so that's a week from this Thursday. Next week, I will be gone, I'll be in DC, uh, at a Zebra Muscle Conference, and I'll be looking to get you guys positioned for a free Sparker.
You're, uh, you're not, uh, using my picture yet, are you?
No, I did that to you at Sacrament, I know.
I just want.
How am I going to get a Sparker? How am I going to get a Sparker? Well, we're going to the Corps of Engineers to, uh, seek more funding to continue doing research on the Sparker and improve the model, et cetera. And so I'm carrying the banner of Rouse's Point to.
Oh, thank you.
Look at what we've done and what we've spent on it and, you know, gives, the Corps of Engineers should give us some of that money so that we don't pay another cent on it.
Is this a new and improved Sparker?
Yeah, that's what it's supposed to be. Right.
That it, Doug?
That's it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. And that's all that.
Thank you, Trustee Menard. Trustee Pentale.
I just have one item. I was approached by Tony Queen regarding the use of this room for her, uh, for the justice court. And, um, getting the new computer that she got the grant for that's arriving, she has a question as to whether or not we could do anything with the space where she keeps her photocopier so that she could keep the computer here. I guess it's become an inconvenience having to run back and forth in the middle of the court session to the village office to print forms. She, she said she tries to anticipate as best she can what she will need based on what is on the agenda for the evening. But occasionally, she actually, you know, needs to run back and forth and she finds that if she could enter things on the computer, otherwise she's not really sure what she's going to do with it. In fact, that they, they had preferred, I guess, to get a laptop, but that was unavailable with what the grant, um, was able to provide them. So I asked Bobby about what it would take to actually either insulate or heat the closet or something so that there would be some sort of moderate temperature that we could get her car into to keep that computer on. I don't know, it's something that, um, that she asked me to look into, so.
Did you take a look at it, Bob?
Yeah. We can just put.
I don't foresee any major, do you?
No, not really. All we talked at the meeting, you can open it up and move it in here. It shouldn't be anything, a couple hundred dollars, get it in.
And, and I would include in the budget something so she could have just a small rolling cart so she could pull the computer out here where she needs to during, during the session and then just roll it back in. Otherwise, I'm not sure how it's going to be utilized. It's a great thing for them to have gotten, but.
And be able to use it.
Yeah, she has a nice computer already upstairs in the village office, in their office, and, and having a second one there is really not going to be effective for her, so.
Okay. I don't see a problem with that. Not at all. I really.
That's it?
Thank you, Trustee Pentale. Trustee, Trustee Jefferson.
Okay, I have a couple of things. I was at the sewer plant today and Tommy was off, so I chatted with Ernie. And the roof project is substantially complete, though the painters have been given an ultimatum by the design engineer, Tisdale Associates, to complete their portion by March 15th or other action will be taken, such as liquidated damages. Uh, it looks like the painters took a little bit more time than we anticipated, and there had four people there today that were painting. Uh, the correspondence continues between Wyatt Erisque and the sewer plant regarding their specific industrial user wastewater discharge permit. And that's all I have to report tonight.
What is the problem with the painters, Brian?
Well, I just don't think they're going at it as quite as quick as they should. Uh, we had four guys there today and it's a nasty, the, the paint is, gives me a headache just to walk in there. And then they have a lift with gasoline to operate it and to get up and, so that's putting fumes in there. And they had the door open today and, I don't know, they're just.
But when you said further action will be taken, that can't be related with the paint fumes.
No, that means if they don't complete by the certain date, that we might have to go against them for non-performance of the, uh.
Is there a problem in that line or in that way or?
Well, just they're taking longer than they should. It should be done, is what I'm trying to say. So can you follow up on that, Doug?
Sure. The, uh, the paint subcontractor, uh, I think we learned something. I think the word paint came from the word pain and they just added the T together. And, uh, the, the paint subcontractors have been at pains since day one. They, uh, they, it's just a case of our prime contractor, Luck Brothers, who has done a wonderful job bringing in a, a low bid subcontractor. They've been a joke and we, they've been a nuisance and headache and that's, that's it in plain English. And, uh, um, so we've been on them forever. Whatever they've done, they've done it poorly and they've had to redo it. So now we're, Luck is all done, everybody's waiting for the paint subcontractor. So we're ratcheting up the pressure and just, that's it, just poor performance.
What is this smell, Doug? Is it the chemical in the paint or something? It just smells like a, I, I can't describe it, but you go in and you smell it and it just gives me a headache just from, it's just a.
It's an epoxy based paint?
Always epoxy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. I'm not sure what it is, but I like the smell, so.
You do?
It makes me feel good. It does.
Well, one of the things that, I was talking with John Carr on that sewer project, and I get, sort of gave him an ultimatum. I want the board to realize what I said, that I want sometime in March to get up a bid for the rest of that sewer project, for a simple reason is that we have promised the people in this village to repair Maple Street. And I don't want that held up another year. I want that done this year.
I don't think it's gonna hold up another year, George. That's what you're gonna look like next year.
They'll hold us up. You know, I want it started this, in, in, you know, that project. We probably will pave it this year, but at least it'll be done and settled, and then we'll repave it, it will be paved right.
Between Chapman and Clinton, boy, there's some big problems.
I, I understand that, Brian, but that's all gonna be tore up.
Oh, I know, yeah.
So anyway, then he threw me a curve, and he says, well, he says, "The environmental conservation people are now our DEC, are, and, and the Lake Sham Plain Basin Commission are throwing different parameters into, uh, what's going on with the sewer plant and the operation as far as phosphorus emissions in the lake." And as far as I'm concerned, and I might be wrong, but the biggest share of phosphorus emissions come from the state of Vermont, not the state of New York, and that's a proven fact. And I don't think that we need to be, I don't think we need to, you know, I don't think we need to hold up this project because of that.
They might think otherwise, right?
Well, what I'm saying is, what's that the heck? Has Zach got to do, put in a sewer line? You know, we've gotta put that sewer line in down, down Maple Street.
Totally different issue.
Why should the phosphorus emissions hold up that sewer line? Because it's going into the sewer plant, not out. So, uh, we, we need to discuss that with them, Doug. Keep on them, please.
You got it.
Okay? Is that it, Brian?
That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Trustee Jefferson. Ben?
The only thing I have to report is I spoke to Eric Day today, and, uh, March 15th is the day that Senior Housing should be completed.
What?
Um, that is the day that they agreed upon with HUD, and that was chosen today.